May men and women tonight catch the vision, understand what God's program is for this last day.
Amen. Are you happy to be in our house of the Lord? Can we shake our hand and say hello to somebody, good morning, afternoon, happy to have you around? Amen. Brother, good morning, good afternoon. God bless you, happy to be around. We are so excited to see everyone coming. You're gonna be relaxed, we're not in a very formal shape. Stand up, greet someone, and then be happy. Amen. Amen. While we're doing, having a welcoming you in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. We are glad to have you in our meeting. We just have to do a little bit of recap of what we are. What are we? We are the voice of God that ministry. We believe in the prophet William Abraham. We are known the new nations. We are into the relations with fellowship with everybody. Our little church here, we have no registry, we have no book, we have no law but law. We have no faith but Christ. We have no book but the Bible.
Amen.
Amen. We have no membership but just fellowship. Through the blood of Jesus Christ that hits out of all our belief. That's what we are. And before I carry on, I would just like to draw your attention on something. It has to do with what we believe. I mean, at least what I believe personally. If there is a church that names the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, it is the church that I love. If there is a person that will call upon his name, the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, or if there is anybody who has respect to him, he is my brother. No matter what brand religion is, whether he is Methodist, whether he is Baptist, whether he is Catholic, whether he is, no matter universal, whatever it might be, if he prays to the name of the Lord, if he has respect to the name of the Lord, we have respect, it is our brother and fellowship. So that was our welcoming in for you guys, just to let you know what we do. We believe in the prophets as I say, but if you can ask me, Brother Mike, where is the promise of the prophet in the Bible? Where did you get this guide from? Is he out of Norway, or where is he coming from? Who is he? I believe Brother Pastor Joel is my companion, a little bit more breakdown on what we believe, and we present you the video also of the men who are presenting in search of you guys. But in the very last book of the Bible, in the Old Testament, there is a promise of giving them in the book of Malachi 4:6. We have so many promises in the Bible, but we refer also to, but in that specific one is saying, "Behold, our saints who elated the prophet before the coming of the great and dreadful day of the Lord; and we shall turn the heart of the Father to the children, and the heart of the children to the Father, lest I come and smother the earth with the first smile." What draws my attention is the great and dreadful of the Lord. Amen. The great and dreadful of the Lord has yet come. We all understand, we know, because not the end of the world yet. So we should sincerely look for the light that speaks about you. Because if you go back in the Bible, they came and asked Jesus, "Jesus, you said that Elijah must come first." Elijah the prophet, Elijah, or John the Baptist was Elijah, but why he couldn't, must wait another Elijah again? That was Elijah 3. He says, "He comes to prefer my way. There shall be another one coming forward as well. But my intention is the great and dreadful of the Lord." So where is that the light? We need to see in the Bible. The prophet did not come to the ministry we live in. That's one of them. The prophet never came in a group of people. The prophet was an old person. You go down the Bible, or Christian Bible, as we can see, when Moses came, he was rejected to the majority. Only few people accepted him. When David came, Jeremiah, the Zebras, all of them, they came. They were rejected to the ministry, to the religion. They were only accepted to a small amount of people. They came to a select few, the greatest nature. Imagine if the prophet of Malachi 4 came, and we missed him. What if he's like the prophet of old? I know only a small people are number people who know and recognize him. If this prophet is to return in the last day, how will we know him? Question number one. How will you know that Elijah the prophet is returned? The answers spread less seen in the scriptures. He will have the nature of a prophet. He will know the spirit of the heart. He will perform the miracles. The religious organization will attempt to discredit him, like they're doing now in the social media. You go on Google, you tap William Abraham, you see all kinds of things about Abraham. That's why they're discrediting about him. But there will be a true subject that will recognize him, and the proper promise of that day. How will we know Elijah will return? And what characteristics will be displayed to her we can recognize him? Elijah was a man of the wonders. If you go back in the Bible, great sounds and wonders followed in his ministry. He preached against the evil of that day. He especially preached against the immorality of the Christians of the time. When Elijah was taken up forever in the childhood of a fire, his spirit fed up on the nations. Great sounds and wonders then marked the nation's ministry. And he also preached against the sin of the world. Both prophets stood alone against the religious organization of that day. Hundreds of years later, the same spirit returns again on the earth in John the Baptist. The prophet Malachi predicted that Elijah would return to introduce the Lord. He says in Malachi 3:1, "Behold, I send my messenger, and he shall prefer the way before me." John the Baptist was true to form as he called the repentance among the children of God. Like Elijah, he preached against the king and the holy religion of the time. How will we know that Elijah's return? The Lord Jesus confirmed that John the Baptist was the prophet of Malachi 3 in the book of Samuel 11:11. For this is he whom is written, "Behold, I send my messenger before my presence." That's what Jesus said. In Luke 1:17, he says that the spirit of Elijah, who was to be in John the Baptist, and he shall go before him in the spirit and power of Elijah, returned the heart of the Father. But not the second part of Malachi 3 had yet to be fulfilled. And the heart of the children, they should be turned against to the Father, lest I come and smother the earth with the first." We are all willing upon him. Now, part of the scripture will come to pass before the second coming of Solomon, or before the second coming of Jesus Christ. Two thousand years after John the Baptist, or let me say 2,035 years, or 24 years, it is again time the spirit of Elijah returned on the earth. That day has come. This is the day we are living in. We have seen the spirit of Elijah return. He defied the modern denominational system. He stood against the sin of the world. He showed signs and wonders. He preached the Bible, word for word, from Genesis to Revelation. The prophet of Malachi 4 came as trumps, and he wrote message from the throne of the Old Maryna. And that prophet's name is William Abraham Abraham. We call him Brother Abraham, just like you call me Brother Mike. We are brothers. We don't want any names. We are brothers. We call him Brother Mike, our Brother Abraham. And the years are some testimonies that the well-known ministers or evangelists spoke about William Abraham. Oral Roberts, world-renowned evangelist and founder of the Oral Roberts University. He said, "William Abraham, whom Allah and believe to be a prophet of God." Tommy was born, a Pentecostal evangelist. He said, "William Abraham kept our ways as a prophet of God and showed us in the twentieth century precisely the same thing that was shown to us in the gospel. God has visited his people for a great profit as raised up among us." Earl Boston is a evangelist manager of the Abraham Campaign. He says, "Before praying for a person, he would give an accurate detail concerning the person's alignment with sickness, and also details of the life, their hometown, their activities, their actions. Even well back in the childhood, Abraham never would made a mistake with the world of knowledge in over the years I was with him." Amen. Who else can explain better than him so? Ourself, our brother, to project a very short video for our visitors, for our self-achieved, we also know who is William Abraham and what we do here, and after that, our call after Pastor Barra to come in. Say what? Amen. Are you happy to be in our house of the Lord?
Amen.
All right. We watched the video, but I'm just keep patient for him.
Got that.
...and miracles that were wrought. We thought it was wonderful.
We're interested, Brother Abraham, in hearing more about the unique ministry of God at the end.
Very well, Brother Tom. Let's go back to the beginning. I was born in eastern Kentucky, in a little old cabin near Bertville, Kentucky. The morning of my birth, I'm told by my parents that there was a light came into the room and hung over me. My people were not a religious people. They did not go to any church. Of course, this calls quite a stir among me. It's followed me all over days of my life. Recently, they took a picture of him in the scientific world, as shown here. You're probably familiar with this picture. It was proven by science that it was the only supernatural being that was ever scientifically photographed. To my opinion, it's the same angel of God that followed the children of Israel from Egypt and to Palestine. You know, as a scholar yourself, that was the angel of the color, none other than our Lord Jesus Christ. And when he appeared on earth, manifested in flesh, he did not claim to be a great person. He said, "The Son can do nothing, just as the Father showed him." In St. John, the fifth chapter, perhaps you're familiar with it, the scripture, Jesus passed through this famous pool of Bethesda. He found many crippled people there, blind, tall, lame, waiting for the moving of the water. It was strange that he just ministered to one. But if you'll notice, he knew where that person was. The father had shown him. He healed this one. Perhaps he wasn't crippled, he was just laying on a pallet. But Jesus healed him. Then farther in the chapter, we find about the night he's birthed, that he was questioned by the Jews. Perhaps it would be questionable today why God would pass through a place where all those people were lame and tall and bright, and would not heal them all. But here, I quote his word. He said, "Barely, barely, I say unto you, the Son can do nothing of himself, but what he sees the Father do. This doeth the Son likewise." And according to his own word, his ministry was based upon visions from his father. Would not be strange then that his ministry should be carried on as he promised his disciples, "The things that I do shall you do also. Greater than this shall you do, for I go unto my Father." He said, "A little while and the world will see a female more. Yet you shall see me, for I'll be with you, even in you, to the end of the world. Jesus Christ is the same yesterday, today, and forever." I believe it's a confirmation in this last day of the resurrection of Jesus Christ living among his people, performing the same signs he wanted that he did when he was here on earth. At the age of 37, we moved from Kentucky to Indiana, up through a bit, where we live now. We packed our water in from a well some city block, I suppose, behind the old country home. One beautiful September afternoon, while coming from the pump with some water, it was a stately popper tree stood about halfway between the pump and the home. Passing by there, there was a whirl of wind in the tree, what we call here a whirlwind. While it was nothing out for that time of year in this part of the country, but it remained the tree, it didn't leave. I stopped to see what it was, and a voice over me saying, "Do not ever smoke, or drink, or devour your body in any way, for that will be a work for you to do when you get old." Frightened! That's not a word, Father. I ran home quickly, telling my mother that a man spoke to me out of a tree. Well, she thought I was nervous, she put me to bed. But from then on, visions began to come. When this comes upon me, it produces a vision. I am able to tell people what's wrong with them, what they must do in life, and the sins that they are holding back in their life. At the age of 37, one night I was praying in my room. And when I raised up, I noticed there was a light on the floor. And looking around to see where it came from, it was coming from above. The pillar of fire hanging just above was throwing the light on the floor. I heard someone walking. I looked coming through the room, coming into the side, came a man. And humans figured he'd be about 200 pounds weight, he had dark hair to his shoulders, not a complexion. He's barefooted. Of course, I was frightened. And he said to me, "Fear not." And as soon as I heard that voice, I knew it was the same voice that it always spoke to me, but the first time I'd ever seen a human form. He said, "I am sensing the presence of God to tell you that you're to pray for sick people. Great signs and wonders will be following your ministry, and you'll be praying for kings and monarchs and so forth." But when I was a poor man, I had no education. I would not be able to do this job. He said, "If Moses was given two signs of confirmation of his ministry, that I would be given two signs. One would be to pray for the sick, the miracles, and the other would be, you know, the very secret of the people's heart." I told him that I had been praying about this, that the people told me that it was of the devil, the ministry. He referred to me in his scriptures, such as from Philippi, about Nathaniel, and Nathaniel came to Jesus, while Jesus told him where he had been, where he was under the tree when Nathaniel found him. And many other scriptures, such as the woman at the well, how that she was revealed her sins to her when Jesus told her that she had five husbands. She ran into this city and said, "This is the crime." Many other scriptures he referred to. I told him I would go. He gave me the assurance that he would be with me always. As you know, Brother Tom, in the world knows of the great things that's been taking place in the ministry. We were thinking about whether these visions I would remember very long. Some time ago, I had one, about four years ago, to be exact, of a little boy being dead on the side of the road, struck by a car and killed. He was to be raged from the dead for help. I told everybody about it, prophesied to United States and Canada. Thousands of Bibles had it written on their fly leaf that this would take place. One day, while we were having campaigns in the Scandinavian country, we were coming down to Finland from Torgiol. And there was a group of people gathered on the side of the road. They were hovering over some sort of a farm. We got out to look. There it was, the little boy. Everything is seen just this way, it was shown to me. I said to Brother Moore, "Look at your Bible and see if this is the scene." "Yes," he said. I knelt down and asked our Lord Jesus to confirm his word that he had chosen, and it told me would come to pass. The little boy was brought to life again by our Lord Jesus. He's alive and healthy today. Brother Tom, this is just a few of the things that our Lord Jesus is doing today, and the ministry that he has committed to me. To my humble opinion, is to confirm his word, the things that he promised that would happen in this day, we are seeing and take place today. Now concerning the campaign in Israel, Brother Tom, I've been very happy to serve our Lord in Israel. I believe that my ministry will be very effective to the Jews because, as the scripture says, "The Jews seek signs to greet wisdom." We believe many Jews and others there in the Holy Land will come to believe that the Lord Jesus Christ is Messiah when they see a Christian fulfilling the prophecy of Joel in the Old Testament. Yes, Brother Tom, I'm sure that you're referring to Joel's prophecy in the Old Testament, Joel 2:28. How did he prophesy, saying that in the last day he had four hours period upon all flesh, the sons and daughters who prophesied, the old man with dream-dream, and the young man with sea-bathing?
Well, Brother Abraham, I guess I'll have to say goodbye for this time. It certainly's been a great pleasure and gratifying. We'll have to be running along, but we will see you, God willing, in Chicago in the next couple of days.
Well, gentlemen, it's been a pleasure to have you in our home tonight. We'll be praying together for the success of the Chicago meeting. And by God's grace...
Thank you so much. Now is the time to invite Pastor Barbara to come forward, to introduce the group that came with her and her church, to introduce us what she has. She's a lovely lady. Let's give a hand up while she's coming forward.
Brother Mike, all of you who are six-fifteen brothers of the Voice of God Cape Ministry, all of you who have come here are A.C. best. F.A.C.E., Faith and Care and Honor Group of Cape Community Group who was here. I come as a sister of pride to say greetings.
Amen.
We are the Bay community of the holiday concert of Christ. We meet in the sacred space on Sunday mornings from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM to 11:30 AM. And then you come in at twelve, and double, and triple, and quadruple the blessings that have been reverberating in the sacred space. I have the joy to introduce the young people of our Bay community who are here. Here are the four, very diverse, very rich, very the Bay community that they have had the opportunity to share a wicked experience with. And they are like Lainey, King of Lane, and Lonnie Pitts, and Converse Staple, and Nancy Lane, and Lily. You can stand up. You're not the strangers. Young people, I am so proud of you who made this statement. Your parents and auntie are here. This is the telephone. Long Lane. When Brother Mike and I first connected by media net, Brother Mike was saying, "Our faith community is looking for a sacred space. Maybe could we hand it? And we made a lot of guesses possible. And we had to go through insurance books and forms and... But we went through that because of one of your quotations there, "For God, all things are possible." I have no other message to say how wonderful that you, who are believers in God, believers in Jesus, believers in the Spirit, are able to share the sacred space, to share that man beloved by God, beloved by others, together. May we fulfill those mandates. May love by God be worthy of others, and the well of God be well of us.
Amen.
Amen, brother. Thank you so much, Pastor Barbara. May the Lord richly bless you. We're going to another session. If the brother can come and help us, we'd like to invite the pastor of the day. We'll bring the world, his name is Pastor Joel of the Love Star Movement in South Erie. And I'd like to acknowledge every single man and woman around here. May the Lord richly bless you. We thank you for coming. We thank you for taking your time to come to fellowship with us. May the blessing be upon you. As Pastor Barbara said, "Only love will make it over death." We believe in the Lord Jesus Christ. We believe in love. Let us love each other. Brother, if you can forward please. Brother Elijah, I'll say that. Thank you. Just a close walk with him.
Amen. Amen.
I am everywhere, my love is strong. Jesus give me all around. I've been far along. And my love, it's all the same. The heart, child, it goes on. Why, let it be, love in my heart. Hallelujah. Oh, let it be, walking for glory. Let it be, we are all. Hallelujah. Just a close walk once again. Just a close walk. Just a close walk with him. Oh, Father, take it up in my heart. Oh, let it be, walking for glory. Let it be, we are all. Oh, this world, I'm free. It's a part of the love, oh, yeah. Um, who will my burden shed from? None but thee, we are all. Just close the door, just a close walk with him. Oh, why, let it be, love in my heart. Hallelujah. Let it be, walking for glory. Oh, let it be, we are all. Let it be. When my people around is over. When I get over this door. Come with me, we'll be no more. Come, and we will be more. I'll reach and play. Oh, let me gently serve the Lord. Till I can come so true, till I show. Just a close walk with him. Oh, oh. Why, let it be, love in my heart. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Let it be, walking for glory. Let it be, we are all. Peace.
I do you in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ.
Salut, mon Seigneur du Père.
My name is Brother Joel.
My name is Brother Joel.
Some call me Master Joel.
Some call me Brother Joel.
I'm just your brother.
I'm your brother. Are you happy? Amen. Are we happy? We're content. It's a privilege to stand before you. It's a privilege to stand before you. Ah, without wasting time. Without time. It's good to see everybody. It's good to see everyone. We greet everybody already, right? We greeted everyone. Amen. Amen. Can we please read the Bible? We can read the Bible. We believe the Bible. We believe the Bible. Is an absolute for us. Absolute. It's the word of God in written form. It's the word of God in written form. For the respect, let us please stand on our feet. For the respect, stand on your feet. I will not take longer. I won't take too long. We just have a small title. We have a small title. Our God is a living God. Our God is a living God. Let us please read the Book of Romans. Read Romans. Romans 14. Romans 14. Verse 11. Verse 11. I will do a few readings of that verse. I will do a few readings of that verse. But for now, let's just read that one. But for now, let's just read that one. Romans 11. Romans 14. Romans 11, verse 14. No, 14, 11. Romans 14, verse 11. If you are there, please give me an amen. If you're alive, or you want a message, please. We are there? We are. Let's wait also for those that are still looking. It's not their problem. Okay. Okay, we read? We read. For it is written, As I leave, As I leave, Said the Lord, Said the Lord, Every knee shall bow to me, Every knee shall bow to me, And every tongue shall confess to God. And every tongue shall confess to God. Let us pray. Dear Lord Jesus, Dear Lord Jesus, Heavenly Father, Heavenly Father, There is a man like you. There is a man like you. You've allowed this opportunity. You've allowed this opportunity. And this moment, oh Father, Oh Father, It takes you to vindicate your word. It takes you to vindicate your word. The songs has been sung. Songs have been sung. People presented. People presented. Lord, everything that went on. Everything that went on. Now we leave the moment of the word at your holy hands. Now we leave the moment of the word at your holy hands. We know in the beginning was the word. We know in the beginning was the word. And the word was with you, and the word was you. And the word was with you, and the word was you. And that same word was made flesh. And that same word was made flesh. And it dropped among us. And it dropped among us. And we held of it, oh Father. And we held of it, oh Father. And we believe we have the same word. And we believe we have the same word. Which is yourself, oh Father. Which is yourself, oh Father. Therefore, let the power of the word, Therefore, let the power of the word, The power of creation, The power of creation, Be in this place. Be in this place. If there was a sickness in our midst, If there was a sickness in our midst, Let it be healed completely. Let it be healed completely. If there was worries and needs, oh Father, If there was worries and needs, oh Father, You provide for your children. You provide for your children. Give us joy, give us peace. Give us joy, give us peace. Take a hold of the entire assembly. Take a hold of the entire assembly. Bless up your humble servant that I have. Bless up your humble servant that I have. As I set myself aside, As I set myself aside, And I stand under the altar of my high form, And I stand under the altar of my high form, Lord God, let your presence drop. Lord God, let your presence drop. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen. Amen. You may be seated ahead. You may be seated ahead. Amen. Amen. I read another text. I read another scripture. From Jeremiah 10. Jeremiah 10. Verse 10. Verse 10. The Bible says, The Bible says, But the Lord is true, But the Lord is true, And he is a living God, And he is a living God, An everlasting king, An everlasting king, And his wrath shall bear the earth tremble, And the nation shall not be able to abide his indignation. And the nation shall not be able to abide his indignation. It's written that he's alive, It's written that he's alive, That he's a living God. That he's a living God. Hallelujah. Amen. The Lord God, The Lord God, Is a living God. Is a living God. Where we read in Romans, Where we read in Romans, It's telling us that he is a living God. He is a living God. The Bible tells us, The Bible tells us, In Hebrews 11. In Hebrews 11. Everybody here is a Bible student, I believe. I believe everybody here is a Bible student. Are we Bible students? We're students. Because I don't want to say the Bible, the Bible, and then people get confused. Because I want to talk about the Bible, but people don't... So in Hebrews 11, In Hebrews 11, The Bible says, The Bible says, That he that comes to God, That he that comes to God, Must believe that he is. That he is. Hallelujah. Amen. When you believe that he is, When you believe that he is, It's a present test. It's a present test. It's not that he was. It's not that he was. That he that comes to God, That he that comes to God, Hebrews 11:6, Must believe that he is. Must believe that he is. So you have to believe that he exists. So you have to believe that he exists. That he's present. That he's present. That he's living. That he's living. Hallelujah. When you approach him, When you approach him, If you approach him another way, If you approach him another way, It will be hard for him to receive you. It will be hard for him to receive you. But if you approach him that way, But if you approach him that way, Then you are in the right path for him to receive you. Then you are in the right path for him to receive you. Surely he lives. Surely he lives. And the Bible says, "As long as I live", "As long as I live", That's what God told us. "As long as I live", "As long as I live", Every knee, Every knee, Shava, Shava, And every tongue, And every tongue, Shall confess, Shall confess, And to confess him, And to confess him, As long as he lives. As long as he lives. But sometimes it seems as if God is not there. But sometimes it seems as if God is not there. It seems as if he's absent. It seems as if he's absent. Why does God do that? Why does God do that? Because of his presence to have faith. Because of his presence to have faith. Do you understand me? Amen. Because of faith, Because of faith, Is a substance of something that you hope for. Is a substance of something that you hope for. When you are approaching God, When you are approaching God, You hope to be in contact with him. You hope to be in contact with him. You hope to have a relationship with him. You hope to have a relationship with him. But you don't know for sure whether you're gonna have a relationship with him or not. But you don't know for sure whether you're gonna have a relationship with him or not. Now, because of that hope, Now, because of that hope, And you put an assurance to it, And you put an assurance to it, That it becomes faith. That it becomes faith. But you are still hoping. But you are still hoping. It's an assurance, It's an assurance, Of what you are hoping, Of what you are hoping, To obtain. To obtain. Amen. You don't have it yet, You don't have it yet, But you are sure, But you are sure, That you're going to obtain it. That you're going to obtain it. So you don't see God, So you don't see God, But you have the hope. But you have the hope. That when you approach him, That when you approach him, He will reply back to you. He will reply back to you. He will make himself real to you. He will make himself real to you. When God sees that, When God sees that, That's what pleases him. That's what pleases him. That's why he told us, without faith, That's why he told us, without faith, It is impossible to please God. It is impossible to please God. Because you have to see that assurance first. Because you have to see that assurance first. Faith. Faith. You cannot have faith if you know something. You cannot have faith if you know something. If you know something for sure, If you know something for sure, I cannot have faith anymore. I cannot have faith anymore. If I know that when I open this Bible, If I know that when I open this Bible, I'll be able to read it, I'll be able to read it, Because I am taught to read. Because I am taught to read. I know how to read. I know how to read. Then I don't have faith to read anymore. Then I don't have faith to read anymore. Because I know I can. Because I know I can. I know that I will. I know that I will. But faith is when, But faith is when, I'm hoping, I'm hoping, But I don't know. But I don't know. But I'm still hoping. But I'm still hoping. If you know something, If you know something, You don't have faith. You don't have faith. You have faith when you're not sure. You have faith when you're not sure. But still holding. But still holding. That's what people, when they come to God, That's what people, when they come to God, Sometimes they wonder, is God real or not? Sometimes they wonder, is God real or not? And by faith, And by faith, Now you can hope to him. Now you can hope to him. And when he sees that, And when he sees that, Then he reveals himself. Then he reveals himself. Then you know that he's a living God. Then you know that he's a living God. He's a living God. He's a living God. Amen. Amen. Let me read a few scriptures. Let me read a few scriptures. Want to read a scripture here? Let us read from First Corinthians. First Corinthians. Beginning from the 18th verse. Beginning from the 18th verse. First Corinthians 1, from the first verse. First Corinthians 1. From the 18th verse. From the 18th verse. It says what the Bible tells us. It says what the Bible tells us. Amen. Amen. First Corinthians. First Corinthians. Just a few context. I won't take long. I won't take long. Are we there? We're there. First Corinthians, chapter 1, verse 18. First Corinthians, chapter 1, verse 18. After that, I'll read Second Corinthians 2, verse 11. After that, I'll read Second Corinthians 2, verse 11. But I start from 18. But I start from 18. For the preaching of the cross, For the preaching of the cross, Is to damn that perish foolishness. Is to damn that perish foolishness. But to us which are saved, But to us which are saved, It is the power of God. It is the power of God. Hallelujah. Amen. For it is written, For it is written, I will destroy the wisdom of the wise, I will destroy the wisdom of the wise, And I will bring to nothing the understanding of the foolish. And I will bring to nothing the understanding of the foolish. Where is the wise? Where is the wise? Where is the scribe? Where is the scribe? Where is the disputed of this world? Where is the disputed of this world? Has not God made foolishness the wisdom of this world? Has not God made foolishness the wisdom of this world? May I quote that again? Let me quote it again. May I quote that again? Has not made the foolishness of the wisdom of this world? Has not made the foolishness of the wisdom of this world? What is the wisdom of this world? What is the wisdom of this world? Foolishness. Foolishness. Has not God made foolishness the wisdom of this world? Has not God made foolishness the wisdom of this world? For after that, in the wisdom of God, For after that, in the wisdom of God, By the world, by the world, by wisdom knew not God. By the world, by the world, knew not God. But it pleased God, But it pleased God, By foolishness, By foolishness, Of preaching, Of preaching, To save them which had believed. To save them which had believed. Let me read that verse again. Let me read that verse again. Listen closely. Listen closely. For after that, in the wisdom of God, For after that, in the wisdom of God, The world by wisdom, The world by wisdom, Knew not God. Knew not God. Huh? It pleased God, It pleased God, By the foolishness of the preaching to save them that believed. By the foolishness of the preaching to save them that believed. For the Jewish required a sign, For the Jewish required a sign, And the Greeks seek after wisdom. And the Greeks seek after wisdom. But we preach Christ, But we preach Christ, Justified, Justified, unto the Jews a stumbling block, unto the Jews a stumbling block, And to the Greeks the foolishness. And to the Greeks the foolishness. But unto them which are called, But unto them which are called, Both Jewish and Greeks, Both Jewish and Greeks, Christ, Christ, The power of God, The power of God, And the wisdom of God. And the wisdom of God. The wisdom of God and the power of God is Christ. The wisdom of God and the power of God is Christ. Are you getting me? Are you getting me? Because the foolishness of God, Because the foolishness of God, Is wiser than men. Is wiser than men. And the weakness of God, And the weakness of God, Is stronger than men. Is stronger than men. Hallelujah. Let's, I'll go to Second Corinthians, 12th chapter. I'll go to Second Corinthians, 12th chapter. And number the verse. And number the verse. Second Corinthians. I have my notes already. I have my notes already. Verse 11. Verse 11. I have become a fool, I have become a fool, In glory, in glory. In glory. Ye have compelled me, Ye have compelled me, For I ought to have been commanded of you. For I ought to have been commanded of you. For in nothing I am behind in the, in the very chiefest apostle, though I be nothing. For in nothing I am behind in the, in the very chiefest apostle, though I be nothing. Amen. Amen. Paul has become a fool, Paul has become a fool, To the world, To the world, The gospel, The gospel, Of the living God, Of the living God, Makes you to be a peculiar person. Makes you a peculiar person. It makes you an odd man. It makes you an odd man. Somebody that cannot be understood. Somebody that cannot be understood. There is a living God, There is a living God, And the people that approach him, And the people that approach him, Must first know that he lives. Must first know that he lives. How do you explain to people that God lives? How do you explain to people that God lives? By scientific proof. By scientific proof. How do you prove to somebody? And sometimes people say, prove it and I'll believe it. But you will see that even though sometimes God proves it. There's people that even if the word is proved to them, they still reject it. So prove it and I'll believe it. Does it always work in the things of God? Because there's times that people say, prove it and I'll believe it. But when God proves it, they still back down. So that's why the gospel becomes like a foolishness for people. For people that seem to be wise. But that foolishness is wise than the wisdom of man. And the weakness of God is stronger than the strength of any man. So I want to tell you this afternoon, that if you need strength, you can only find it in Jesus Christ. You can only find it in the word of God. I want to tell you this afternoon, if you need wisdom, there is a great wisdom in the word of God. And what is that wisdom? Christ. The wisdom of God, the power of God. It has the power to save, power to heal, power to deliver, power to do anything. Christ is the power of God. Because God, by Christ, made everything exist. Visible or invisible. By Christ. Hallelujah! And this afternoon, God is looking for people. Let me read my notes very carefully. Listen, we're living in a time when culture, education and things has more than over the word of God. Do you understand me? The time into a living. It's a time where culture, traditions, creeds of the churches, our dogmas, doctrines of churches, everything that will happen in the world smotheres over the word of God. Amen? We had a lot of things. That's why Jesus told the, uh, the Pharisees. By your traditions, you have made the word of God be of no effect. The word of God is powerful. It's active. It's effective. But by the traditions that were set in place, it made the word of God to be of small effect. Who understand me? Christ is still the power of God. Christ is still the wisdom of God. But traditions, screens, interpretations, our dogmas, all these things that religion brings just smothers the word of God. That's the condition in which we are living. That's the condition that we are in. All those things are smothering the word of God. And we go into reasoning and so forth. And this is the time of the battle. Because everything is smothering over the word of God. But the question is, who will stand? Who will stand? While living in a time like Elijah was living. Amen? When there was prophets of Baal and so forth. Who will stand? These are the times that we are living. When God wants to see, we're living in a time like the time of Daniel. Where we have laws that threaten anything but the Bible. But we have laws that break the doctrines of the Bible. It's a time like Daniel's time. Who will stand? Oh my God! The battle is now. And God is training his people. God wants men and women. This is what I want you to know. God is looking for men and women this afternoon. You can raise up and say, I will take the Lord and his word. Amen? No matter what fail. No, where this and that. What that person did or that. That has nothing to do with it. Amen? People that are not afraid. God is looking for an army that will go forth. Men of faith, women of faith, people that can move forward. And if God finds those people, move forward who is powerful. And God will give them understanding. They don't have to be smart. They don't have to be educated. The things of God, does it matter how many degrees you have? The things of revelation. Spiritual things. They don't have to have much understanding. Some of their apostles were learned. Some of their apostles were learned. Some of them had education, some didn't have. God picks up anybody that is ready to be a vessel. That is ready to be a channel. God is looking for channels. He's looking for people to take a hold of. Like he did with Elijah. Like he did with the three year bros. Like he did with Moses. And he did with all the saints. That's what God is looking for. If we can get a hold of somebody, that's it. What does this person have to do? Nothing. Just submit themselves to the word of God. Just take the word of God. The way which it came. It might be difficult. I take a story. One day there was Peter. A fisherman. He fished for all his life. And there was a day, a night, when there was no fish in the water. And here comes Jesus, who was not a fisherman by profession. And he told Peter, go take cast a net in the water and you will have fish. What would you say if you were a fisherman professional like Peter? I know this. I have experience in this. I've done this over the whole month. And I'm telling you, there is no fish today. We have set up the traps. We put the nest all night long. There was no fish. There is no fish. Peter told him, the Lord, we did everything. And honestly, there is no fish. But at that word, because you spoke. That's what God is looking for. Somebody that will say, Lord, I know. I try my education. I try everything we know. Only this time I will take you at your word. Who understand me? And Peter said, at that word, I will cast the net. At that time, Peter cast the net. At his word. Because the word was in the beginning. And the word created in the beginning. By the time Peter was putting the net down, fish was created. Who understand me? Because he took the word. And God is looking for people that will just take the word. Just the way it comes. If we can only believe. Who understand me? We're living in a time where preachers, they don't even know how to judge right from wrong. Do you know that? That's the time we are living in. Did you know that preachers, they can't judge which is right? The word of God or the church did the nomination. They don't know which road to take. They can't judge right between and wrong. I know the Bible says it. But our church also says. Who's understanding me? Even preachers. Sometimes, I know the words, the Bible says, but the church says, that's the time we are living in. Who understand me? I know the Bible says, but the church also says, people are no longer capable of judging right and wrong. Anything that's contrary to God's word is wrong. The Bible says, let God's word be the truth and God's word be a lie. If, if the word of God says something, if the word of God says something, and I, Pastor Joelle, come before you and say, you see, it says this, but you have to reject my word to take God's word. Because we believe by the spirit of God from this Bible on behalf of God. The Bible is so perfectly written that it does not need correction. Over the years, God has watched over his word. Who understand me? Who's understanding what I'm trying to say? And if we can take the word of God over the word of Pastor Joelle, over the word of our church, over the word of our denomination, I tell you, you will see, you will experience that God truly is a living God. Hallelujah! He is a living God, but he refuses himself to those that take him at his word. To those that believe him for who he is. He does one thing with God. God cannot break his own word. A man is as good as his word. If he says something and is not able to fulfill it, then that person is not honest enough. And God to be honest enough, to honestly something, he has to be able to keep it. And God cannot say something and not be able to keep it. Once he says it, he has to back it up. That's why I tell you, my friends, you can't hang your life on the word of God. I will hang my life on the word of God. Because the word of God will overcome anything, anytime, anywhere, any place. It will overcome the devil anyway. In hell, in heaven, it overcame the devil. On earth, it overcame the devil. In the haze, it also overcame the devil. It will overcome him everywhere. If you want to be an overcomer, you need the word of you. That will give you strength. The word of the living God. And when you take the word, you become an odd man. Because you don't understand who you are. Because you become so odd. A peculiar person. Can you think about Noah? Do you know what the Bible says? That there was never rain on earth. Until Noah began to say, by the word of God, then it will rain. At the time that Noah was living, it never rained before. If it was today, who would believe that? It never rained before. What an odd man! And he began to build an ark, saying there will be rain. Who would believe it? Hallelujah! His days were a long time. He became an odd man. But because the word does not fail, it gave to pass. Who's understanding me? If you take Abraham, an odd man, what kind of a man is this? Who leaves his father's house? Who leaves his country? And goes wandering around to a place he doesn't even know where he's going. He said, I hear a voice that tells me to go to where, the voice will show me. The voice could have asked him, April, where we going? He said, where the Lord will lead me. He didn't know where he's going until he got to the land. Then God revealed to him that I'll give you this place. An odd man. Look at such a man walking around. If you look at Moses, he comes to free slaves with a stick in his hand. Saying, I am a living God. Pharaoh let my people go. And when Pharaoh look at him, what did you bring? Pharaoh was the most powerful army at that time. Ah? He was a strong nation, Egypt at that time. And here comes a man with a stick in his hand, saying, let my people go. An odd man. Hallelujah! And God does these things for the people that can take him at his word. And when they take him at his word, they become odd balls. Then he shows that he's a living God. And he brings every opposition to their knees. Who understand me? The people that mocked at Noah, they came to their knees. And they died and they perished. Because they rejected the word. Everybody that stood before Abraham came to their knees. Pharaoh tried to take his wife. God visited him. And he came to preach for that same Pharaoh. Abimele tried to take his wife again. And the God of heaven, the living God, came to protect Abraham. Hallelujah! Before the Red Sea, Pharaoh and the, and his army kneeled down before that living God. He's working in simplicity, but as long as he lives, as long as he lives, everything every need spiritual or physical bows before him. Every power. Oh my God! Hallelujah! That's why Elijah, he came and he says, today we are going to know who's the living God. It's okay, there is so much debate. It's okay, people can talk a lot. But today we are going to know. Let the God that means bring fire down. And when Elijah said that, everybody was saying, oh, this is an odd man. Let us go to the mountain. And when they went to the mountains, they live in God. Brought down the fire to prove that he was living. And man, where was he? He could not answer. And friends, you can have a religion. Religion cannot save you. What saves you is the living God. Religion is a poverty. It helps you to be good in the community. But it cannot give you life. Life is the word of God. Who understand me? Life is in the word. The, the Bible, they have religion. Elijah said, let the living God answer him by fire. Those are the times we are living in. The times when God is tested. The times when things are tested. In the time of Daniel, God was tested again. And the living God came down. Let me read real quickly. Daniel six, verse forty-five. I have, I think ten minutes then we go. Amen? Ten minutes, right? Okay. De- uh, Daniel six, verse forty-five and forty-six. After the God of Daniel was proved. Listen to verse forty-five. Then King David wrote out to all the people, nations and languages that dwell in the earth, please be multiplied out to you. I make a decree that in every dominion of my kingdom, men tremble and fear before the God of Daniel. Now he's giving the reason why they should fear him. For he is the living God. Who's getting me? The reason that he makes a decree, this is the reason. For he is the living God and steadfast forever. And this day, God of Daniel proved himself. Who understand? He proved himself to be true, to be real, to be living. Because Daniel was in Daniel's land. And the, the God saved him from that. Then the king said, no, I have seen with my own eyes this God of Daniel. I heard about the things he has done before, but this time I see because I have seen everybody in my kingdom should subject to this God. Who understand me? If you see God, you say, everybody in under me, everybody in my family. No, no, you have to believe this God. Everybody in my house has believed this God. Why? Because he's a living God. He proved himself to be the living God. God has proved it over and over and over. Hallelujah! He has proven it over and over. There was a time, there was a big debate about divine healing. He, he, he may never say. Hallelujah! In Houston, Texas. And it was a big debate. Hallelujah! There was a big debate. And when the debate was happening, Dr. Best, Dr. Best, a good theologian, a scholar, he said he doesn't believe Marx's theory and the rest of the scriptures. Hallelujah! And he challenged our dear brother, Brother Martin, who presented. Hallelujah! And when he was challenging him, when Brother Ronan began to speak, the living God, the pillar of fire came down. Hallelujah! That's why you see how scary this picture here. We don't worship a man. But that's because the pillar of fire was photographed. A supernatural being. Trust time being photographed. And what happened? They took it to FBI to test it. And until they proved, no, this was something that was real. That's why sometimes you see how scary this picture to testify that the living God still works in supernatural way. And the, the original of this picture is in Washington DC in the Library of Congress. Who understand me? The original approved by FBI after investigation. So we preach a God that we know. We don't preach a God that is history. This supernatural being, the supernatural does not stay here. It leaves. Amen. This supernatural is not only in there. It is real. One day, a maniac, a crazy man came to challenge Brother Brandon in the prayer lounge. He said, "I'm going to kill you." Hallelujah! And Brother Brandon had the living God. What happened? This man was approaching. He was about to kill him. And he was approaching six, seven foot. These are stories that exist. And as the man approached, the spirit of the Lord got a hold of the prophet. And he said, "I'm going, you are going to bow under my feet today." By the time the man got to the forehead, he fell down. He had a spirit in him. But because the presence of the living God was there, this man fell down. That spirit fell down. What am I trying to say? Your cancer can fall down here. Your disease can fall down. And belief can fall down. Because God is living, nothing can resist. Who understand me? And the pillar of fire, we have not just seen it in the picture. He's real. It's real. Oh, the love of the master. Paul, not that lie. And a lot of us here have that experience. Hallelujah! This man of God was driving his car and was testifying about the living God. And the lady asked him, "I want to know if your God is living." And he told her, "I'm going to show you he's a living God to do any magic. I'm going to pray in the name of Jesus Christ." And when he prayed, did she get the baby? Hallelujah! There's many words to say. This is the word of eternity. But I want you to know that we have a living God. The gospel of Jesus Christ is not a blast. Who understand me? The real gospel. We believe not because we heard, because we see, because it's living in our midst, because they walks in our midst. Cancer's far. I have testimonies. Ah, I have real proof. Scientific evidence. Cancer far. Paralytics, what? Life change. Because why? We take him for who he is. And the Lord bless you. I stop here. I hope you are blessed. Amen. I hope you stay black.
Oh yeah, that will be when my Jesus I shall see. And I look upon his face, the one who saved.
The one who saved me by his grace. When he takes me by the hand. Lead me through the broken sand. Worry days, glory days. when my Jesus such a see. And I look upon his face. The one who saved me by his grace. When he takes me by the hand. Lead me through the broken sand. Worry days, glory days. Thou wilt be when my Jesus such a see. And I look upon his face. The one who saved me by his grace. When he takes me by the hand. Lead me through the broken sand. Worry days, glory days. No more burdens to bear. No more sickness, no pain. Oh, no more body moving. And forever I'll be with the one who died for me. Worry days, glory days. Thou wilt be when my Jesus such a see. And I look upon his face. The one who saved me by his grace. When he takes me by the hand. Lead me through the broken sand. Worry days, glory days. And I look upon his face. The one who saved me by his grace. Worry days, glory days. Oh, I'm happy. And I look upon his face. The one who saved me by his grace. Worry days, glory days. Our heavenly Father, we bless your name. Lord, renew this daily Father, foundation of all the world. We are coming alone because your heart is burning inside of us. As a disciple on the way of the minds of our Lord. They were talking about you, Father. Their heart burned while they were talking about you. Lord, while we were talking about you, Father. Oh, Lord, you are always present. You told us in your scriptures, Father, Lord, that when two of these are given a name or given a need. Lord, your people has come in progress. Your people has come in situation of doubt or may or signs they not resolved. By you, the eternal God, the everlasting one, the oh powerful Lord, you are all and ready to resolve it, Father. We bless your name, Father Lord. We thank you for your presence now, me. We thank you, oh God, for the church of craft. Congregation Church of Craft of Pastor Barbara and its men. With the youth who are doing wonders, the comments support the church, Father. May your holy name be with them, Father. May your prayers and love and divine and devotion be with them, Father Lord. Bless the current who live in their lives, Lord. We are so grateful to them, they are here to follow us, Father. We bless, oh Father Lord, the church of Pastor Barbara, the church of Sabbath, oh Father. May your Holy Spirit carry his own light again. So that you can use it like the Father of today, who delay in the hour of your coming. Lord bless this little flower that you gave us, oh Father, to show the way, oh Father Lord. In all we say, we depend upon you. We look up to you because we say, oh Lord, those that look for you, they will be your strength. They shall run, shall not faint. They shall not perish in evil, oh Father. We are running upon you, Father, because thou art mighty. Oh God, we remain in the service naturally, Father. Go with us on the way back, oh Lord. While we be this missing, oh Father Lord. Father, may you bless each and every one. You know our needs, you know our problems, Father. We only look up to you. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen. Amen, and have a clap to the Lord. One more thing. Uh, we will sing in French for the visitors. And we have some good questions about that. They, you wanna have a beer soda, you wanna have a juice, you wanna have water or something to give them, we can be so long, we apologize for that. But there's one thing that pastor brother, you can tell us. If you can come back maybe for two minutes, just tell us about the home. And they share they had an offering for us. This is a moment we're gonna collect offerings while we sing the French version of Konnichiwa today. And while the song finish, we can discuss as well. They have the customer of doing it, we are waiting for them to do as well. Amen. Let us give a hundred applause to the youth who are here.
Amen, have our big community from the life. The voice of God takes ministry. We offer and offering to the work that you are doing. You are vessels, you are channels of God here in 01519. Each one of us has a different narrative and story for each one of us here. Wherever we come from. Deep in touch, in movement and change by your sharing of the spirit today. So thank you for being sisters and brothers, the gods on planet earth seeking to hear God's love, God's faith, God's hope. Amen. If you have you, um, you should be a part of our Super Bowl. We have a Super Bowl and Super Drive which has been going on since the early part of January. There was a Super Bowl event a couple weeks ago. Some of us watched and cared, some of us watched and didn't care. If any of you want to be a part of the drive, all Super Bowls for our grand and good day which provides, uh, you are all the drive teams for those who are insecure. You are our neighbors in Christ and as much as you share our space here, you would be a part of that. Thank you so very much. My joy to have shared, it's been a hard time.
Thank you so much. Our brother gave us Konnichiwa today. If you don't listen to us, just clap your hands. Amen. God richly bless you and all of this peace. Amen. Se desiderer. La city. Se ressere. On se lue. Pour te caper. Au pire temps. Oh, Pèlerin, Pèlerin. Pèlerin, c'est voyageur. Oh oui, ici va, ici va dans les vaudes. Oh toujours, toujours c'est. Et tes hommes restent à la cité. Oh oui, Pèlerin, Pèlerin. Pèlerin, c'est voyageur. Oh oui, ici va, ici va dans les vaudes. Oh oui, toujours c'est. Et tes hommes restent à la cité. Et ça, oh comme tu es. Et tu es. La cité de l'île. La cité. Oh, tout est félicite. Oh oui, tout est félicite. Oh, ici va. Oh oui, là je serai. Là je serai, so so mercredi. Et so mercredi. La soirée. Il est minuit. Il est minuit. Oh oui, là je serai. Là je serai, so so mercredi. Oh oui, et ça. La soirée. Oh oui, il est minuit. Il est minuit. Lord, the prayer in the church in the booth. De ben. Ah, très longue partie. Allé! Donne une vibration et puis. Mon cœur. À toi. À toi. Encore, bien paru. Oui, des gars. Oh, pour maître. Oui, tout. Et de 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 la cité. Et de la se. Oh oui, des gars. Oh, j'aime. Oh oui, pour maître. Oui, tout. Et de 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 la cité. Et de la se. Et à ça, oh salaire, the response is no, sir. Salaire. Oh, I can't pronounce it, my God. Mon cœur. Apesore. Apesore. Oh oui, là. Oh Seigneur. Oh, et toujours. Et toujours. Mon cœur. Oh oui, mon Seigneur. Hallelujah! Tout est félicite. Mon cœur. Et de. Oh, après toujours. Et toujours. J'ai un cœur. Oh oui, mon Seigneur. Oh, ça touche. Mon cœur. Et de. Mon cœur. Et de. What a wonderful event, Jesus. Amen. Oh, I'm afraid I'm in tears. Is a. Why I'm afraid of this girl? Oh, why I'm pretty late to go? Oh, everything you got in mind? Oh, what is for? What is still on my forehead? Oh, why you just break me? Oh, because we don't want to be. Everything you got in mind? Oh, I've been trying on my own days. Be with trouble. It should never be this guy. I'm dead. It's all over. Oh, dead. Father, so bad. Oh, oh, mais bon, so cher. Je vais pas m'en aller. Oh oui, I'm weak and I'm hurt. Oh God, the way I'm dead. And precious and to all. Oh, we're all too worried. Oh, God, I live in glory. Hallelujah! Hallelujah, na, yesu. Hallelujah, God. I live in glory. Hallelujah! Hallelujah, na, yesu. Et moi, hallelujah, God. I live in glory. Hallelujah, God. Hallelujah, na, yesu. God, I live in glory. Hallelujah, na, yesu. Yesu, y'a pas la boue, gay. Oh, et ça qui va. Et toi, j'aime, ben, c'est. Oh, oh, et coste la terre. Et moi, hallelujah, God. I live in glory. So, j'aime. Hallelujah, na, yesu. Et moi, na, yesu. I live in glory. Hallelujah, na, yesu. So, copas y so coli. Oh, colo panalai te. Yo, so pa ki ma ki. Hey, tinga na zo. Et moi, hallelujah, God. I live in glory. I live in glory. Hallelujah, na, yesu. Hallelujah, God. I live in glory. Hallelujah! Hallelujah, na, yesu. Et moi, hallelujah, God. I live in glory. I live in glory. Hallelujah, na, yesu. Na, yesu. God, I live in glory. Hallelujah, na, yesu.